Good evening. We have now come out of closed session and no action was taken. At this time, we'll move on to item four under announcements and committee reports. And I have my COVID-19 update under announcement four A. As of this week, the state of Washington then reports 627,781 cases, 8,451 fatalities throughout the pandemic due to the COVID-19. 69.9% of those ages 12 and up are fully vaccinated in the state. In Skagit County, we've had 10,776 cases of COVID. We've had 109 fatalities and 606 people hospitalized. Our COVID-19 case rates are increasing once again. At present, Skagit is at 552 per 100,000 people over the last 14 days with a hospitalization rate of 12.3 COVID patients per 100,000 population. Reported daily counts are extremely high. Local data shows that we have an average of 59 new test positive cases per day. That was reported from October 8th through October 21st. In Skagit County, 178,310 vaccine doses have been administered to date. 67.8% of those ages 12 and up are fully vaccinated and 73.6% are partially vaccinated in the county. Last Wednesday, the FDA authorized Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson COVID vaccine boosters. The CDC further backed Moderna and J&amp;J boosters on Thursdays, on Thursday, as well as the mix and match strategy. That would mean that a person who is vaccinated with J&amp;J could get a Pfizer or a Moderna vaccine as a booster. Boosters are recommended for people over 65, people between ages 18 and 64 who are at a high risk of severe COVID, as well as people who are at risk of serious COVID because of their jobs. Moderna boosters will be recommended six months after eligible folks completed their primary series of shots, similar to the Pfizer booster. J&amp;J boosters will be recommended for everyone 18 and older who received their initial shot at least two months ago. There are a few more steps before Moderna boosters will be available here in Washington State. The Washington State Scientific Safety Review Work Group and the Washington Department of Health still need to weigh in. When Moderna and J&amp;J boosters are received full authorization, you'll be able to receive an appointment at the fairgrounds if eligible. Reminder, in preparation for the governor's vaccine verification program going into effect on November 15th, the Skagit County Fairgrounds testing site is not a good option for those seeking testing to attend large events. Wait times currently are 30 minutes to an hour and priority is focused on those who are symptomatic or have had a recent exposure. As always, the best way to be safe is by getting vaccinated, following the statewide mask mandate and following the CDC recommendation. And that concludes my COVID update. Are there any questions?
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
I wanted to follow up a little bit. You indicated that we're having growth in COVID cases. And I think you pointed out that we're having 552 of 100,000 people. Do you know that whether there's a disaggregate breakdown, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated or breakthrough cases? I think.
I haven't, I don't have that information this evening.
Okay, if possible, going forward, whenever you can, I think it would illuminate where our work is as a community and just sort of highlight the importance, in my view, of having a vaccination or, you know, just the difficulty with getting it done and getting it out and about.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Young. Any other questions? All right, we'll go on to item 4B, our planning committee report.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Malton.
Thank you. The planning committee met just prior to city council tonight, Mr. Walters, Ms. Cleland McGrath and I. It wasn't a terribly exciting meeting, but we did have some helpful updates from Planning Director Meesmer. Two things are going to the planning commission very soon. One is the R4 bonus height work plan. The other is self-storage units in commercial zones. So those will go to planning commission and then subsequently they'll come to council. There are also going to be some amendments made to our floodplain management code with FEMA and Department of Ecology guidance. And that will be coming to us by December. And we also talked about some grant applications that have been submitted. One is for a housing action plan. One is for a shoreline permit monitoring program. And the other is for a shoreline master program user's guide, which would be very helpful for people and that would be developed, potentially developing near our shorelines to make that process a lot easier and clearer. We also talked about the environmental planner interviews that will be happening November 17th. So stay tuned for results of those at the end of November. And that was pretty much it for today. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I would like, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna switch to the next.
Oh, all right. So we'll move on to item 4C, our personnel committee report. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you, Mayor Gere. So we had our personnel committee meeting October 21st, included Mr. Young and Mr. McDougal, the mayor. And the big news was, not the big news, we officially got to meet our newest addition to the HR department, which is Riley Nguyen. And she's just started, gotten in the mix of everything and started on a number of different projects and has been integrated really well into, into the department and taking a lead on it. We talked a little bit about the initial, the initial report for the classification compensation study, looking at various elected positions and department heads and things like that. Not really anything to report quite yet, but we're working on it. We just had a report, our closed session for labor relations. And then we talked a little bit about COVID vaccinations and Governor Inslee's mandate, vaccine mandate. Fortunately, all of our employees that are under that mandate have complied. And so we are pleased with that. There was also a mandate for district court judge. So court employees and public defenders have all followed those requirements for vaccination. You know, we talked a little bit about long-term care, which was passed this last session. And the City of Anacortes is working with Association of Washington Cities to address those, that new legislation. And then finally, I know that Ms. Nguyen has been taking a lead on the alternative work schedule and just kind of creating a program and an application process. So if folks want to work from home or have a different type of work plan, that is, there's a system in place to work with your supervisor and have it done responsibly and with a plan. So other than that, I think it was a pretty good meeting.
Thank you. Any other additions? Mr. McDougal.
Oh, sorry, I was just giving a thumbs up. Although in my notes, it says about Riley, "Hit ground running and is rocking it."
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. So we'll move on then to item five, which is our public comment. And if you'd like to speak to the council about anything that's not on the agenda this evening, please raise your hand. I will call on you. All right, Jessica Owens, welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Okay, so my name's Jessica Owens. I live at 2211 33rd Street. And I also work in Anacortes and I visit the Anacortes Community Forest Lands nearly every day. I'm alarmed by the operation of Predators of the Heart Animal Sanctuary following the October 19th wolf escape from these facilities. This escape should raise public concern around the safe use of the Anacortes Community Forest Lands and protection of public health and safety. I understand that a wildlife sanctuary may operate under the Skagit County Chapter on Potentially Dangerous Wild Animals, Section 704, which points further to sanctuary exemptions in the Washington State RCW 163010. Under these exemptions, Predators of the Heart violates two, maybe more, sections of that Washington State RCW. Section B states, "No commercial activity involving an animal occurs, including by offering photographic opportunities to paid visitors." Predators of the Heart openly promotes photographic opportunities and interaction with animals on their Airbnb experience website. Section C, "No unescorted public visitations or direct contact between the public and animal." We know that there have been at least three wolf escapes endangering public health and safety. Most recently, October 19th, three wolves escaped from their enclosures, killing a neighborhood dog. October, on October 2017, a wolf jumped a seven-foot electric fence and went onto a neighbor's property. In 2012, a wolf escaped its enclosure and was captured in the forest lands. I understand that Skagit County previously filed a lawsuit against Predators of the Heart for non-compliance with the 2014 ordinance regulating potentially dangerous animals. But that lawsuit was dropped after finding a state exemption that permits the exemption of potentially dangerous wild animals at state fairs. This does not make much sense as the organization is obviously not a state fair. I no longer feel safe entering the forest lands knowing the wolves are capable of escaping, attacking and killing. How many more times do the wolves or other exotic animals there need to escape? How is the public to be assured we are safe? What will happen to the enclosures during a natural disaster like an earthquake? Or even if a tree would fall in the enclosure? Because Predators of the Heart operates on property outside of Anacortes city limits and therefore falls into Skagit County jurisdiction, it is my sincere hope that this will be elevated to the Skagit County commissioners. I urge the City of Anacortes in partnership with the Skagit County commissioners and the Skagit County Animal Control Authority to investigate the business practices of Predators of the Heart in relation to public health and safety. I want to thank you, thank the City of Anacortes for the opportunity to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. I do want to tell you that the city is officially requesting action from the county for the safety of our citizens and enforcement of the laws. So stay tuned. Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening on anything that is not on the agenda? All right, thank you. We'll move on then to item six. It's our consent agenda, A through C.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Miller.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through C.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We're moving on now to item seven under other business. This is open for public comment. And this is a review of the 2022 budget for the Public Works Department. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. Before we kick off the public works specific review, I'd like to take just a moment to look at the budget summary, if I may. So I'm sharing my screen here on a spreadsheet that I did include in the council packet. I know there's a lot of numbers there. I'll just go through it real briefly. What I was trying to illustrate was the adopted budget, looking at the last several years. And each of these columns represents the adopted budget, not the final or amended budget, but the adopted budget, so that we could compare it to the initial draft 2022 budget to try and compare apples to apples as well as we could. So in 2022, and I also included over here a few of the major items that caused, you know, significant differences compared to the 2021 budget. When you drop down to the bottom line, it's a big, it's a big jump. 108 million compared to 73 million last year. So I wanted to point out a few of those things to try and put it in perspective. So, so right away, looking at the, these items that I illustrated, the salient budget items for 2022. In the general fund, the fiber capital is increased almost $7 million over the capital budget in the 2021 initial budget. In 2022, we also have a ladder truck budgeted for 1.5 million and that's in the general fund. And, and then across the governmental funds. So in addition to the general fund, the parks, cemetery and library funds, we reestablished ERNR replacement charges. So council may remember when we were putting the budget together for 2021, we were, you know, mid to, mid to late fall in 2020 and COVID was still a significant concern and unknown. So we eliminated the ERNR replacement charges from this year's budget to try and conserve cash flow. And in the 2022 draft, we have reestablished those ERNR replacement charges at 50%. So the idea would be to work that back into 100% replacement over the next couple of years. You will see a shift in the fire department versus EMS department. So we worked with the fire department. You can see that here. We worked with the fire department to, and this is, it's hard to see, I guess, because of that 1.5 million that's included for the fire trucking here. But we worked closely with payroll and with the fire department to respread those fire costs between the fire department, The way we had it previously, those revenues were budgeted as an interfund transfer. What it does is eliminates the double budget effect. So, in fact, in previous years, the budget was inflated by that 1.1 million dollars because we budgeted for it twice. And the biggest item I wanted to point out right off the bat, the sewer fund includes $20 million outfall capital project. And when you look at the sewer fund, historically, it ran about $7 million a year pretty consistently the last three years, and that jumps up to $30 million in 2022, and that's all in the capital arena, and we'll go through that tonight. Well, I'll leave it at that. There's some other information there. Happy to answer any questions about that. If not, we can jump right into the Public Works review.
Thank you, Mr. Hoagland.
So, the schedule we've set up tonight is, so for October 25th, it's this set of departments right here. So, three of the departments are in the general fund, Fund 001, and then we'll go through transportation, street maintenance is Fund 104, road construction is 105, and then the utilities, and then we'll look at Fund 501, which is the equipment rental fund. So, let's go ahead and jump into the engineering fund in the general funds, 001, 712. And the rest of these, of course, we'll review next Monday is the plan, the rest of the departments, which are non-public works departments. The amount of engineering activity is pretty small, that which resides in the general fund is pretty small, but we have $95,000. Pardon me. Ninety-five thousand identified in interfund services, so our interfund charges comprised primarily of ERNR, and that's the equipment rental fund. So, any of the engineering vehicles, the trucks that the engineers use to drive out to the job sites, and also their computing equipment. The interfund services, the way we have those set up is those interfund transfers pay for the operations of the department of both the Department of Information Services, DIS, which is the computer department. So, it pays for the operations, it also pays for future replacement charges, future replacement costs of future computers, computers, the computers run a five-year life, I think. And then, same with vehicles, the vehicles, I think, pick up around a 10-year life. So, at the end of that 10 years, there's money there to buy a new vehicle. Thirty-six hundred dollars in supplies, fifteen thousand dollars in communication, and that's made up primarily of cell phones, and then $2,000 for training. So, that's the engineering budget within general fund. The facilities fund is department, rather, is number 713, so 001.713. We have 122,000 salaries, a little bit of overtime benefits, 12,500 in supplies, which is relatively consistent with what we've had in the past. Nineteen thousand in interfund services, $40,000 in professional services, which is primarily cost for HVAC control, a little bit of travel and training, insurance, utilities, and then $600,000 in the repairs and maintenance line, and this is made up of these various items, the biggest being the planned replacement of the city hall elevator, $260,000 for miscellaneous facility items, $30,000 Washington Park roof replacement, and $10,000 in the cemetery building roof replacement. Department 714, 001.714, that's the conservation department. Salaries and benefits of 19,000 and 10,500. There's one staff member here, that's quite a low number, as you would recognize. A reminder that this department is split between the general fund and sort of the utilities, where that work is being done. So, that was that direct split of the personnel cost was a result of a state auditor recommendation a couple of years ago. $5,000 budgeted in supplies for LED lighting projects. Thirty-one hundred in our fund, $500 for communication, travel, and repairs and maintenance. So, that's it for the general fund portion of public works. Is there any questions about any of that before we move on to the transportation section? Okay, so scrolling down, transportation starts at Fund 104, and that's the street maintenance department. So, that's at line 775, Fund 104. So, just rolling down through these various bars numbers, personnel costs, and this is in the administration section of the fund, 500 for supplies, interfund services at 55,000. This is the one of the funds you'll recognize, a large increase in the interfund because of the equipment, the large equipment that they use in the transportation departments. They have pretty sizable replacement charges that are being partially reestablished in 2022. Fifty-one thousand for insurance, dropping down this next set of bars numbers is the engineering section. Seventy-one thousand wages, a little bit of overtime, 29,000 benefits, 13,400 in professional services, which is made up of 10,000 in ArcGIS and 3,400 in Cartograph. This is a bit of a decrease from prior years. Dropping down the next set, street maintenance, 146,000 wages, 1,100 overtime, 72,000 benefits. The next two lines are supplies, both .30 and .31 are supplies, supplies bars numbers, and they do, they are used somewhat interchangeably, but you'll see in both crushed rock, lignin, salt, and 3HMA being purchased out of those lines. Interfund services, you can see the significant increase from 2021 to 2022, up to 126,000, 1.85 million for the road overlay program. Salaries, wages, this is down into the sidewalk section now, 5,000 for a little bit of supplies for sidewalks, 6,200 interfund, 175,000, this is for the utilities to pay for the streetlights. I remember back when that number used to be closer to 400,000 before we changed over to the LEDs, that was a good program when that changeover occurred. Dropping down this next section, salaries, wages, 50,000 in the traffic paint sign, traffic paint and sign material section. 14,000 in interfund, 5,000 repairs and maintenance. Salaries, wages, again, 30,000 in operating supplies that'll primarily go towards de-icer. Professional services, 2,000 for debris removal, 2,000 for repairs and maintenance, and this is to address repairs to equipment. And more salaries, benefits, $5,000 for weed spray and weed eater line, things of that nature, it's in the supply budget. Interfund services of 18,000, we have 10,000 budgeted for tree removal.
Mayor here. Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Mr. Hoagland, may I ask you a quick question about salaries and wages on that page?
Please.
Thank you. It looks like the 2021 year-to-date is 164,000, and the budget was 38.5. Is there, this might...
Yeah. No, it's a fair question. We run into this from time to time, and it depends on the, it depends on the projects that are worked out of the road maintenance, out of the road maintenance fund. Our engineers' job costs their time, so depending on which job they're working on, their time gets allocated and charged to that program. So, if we do, where we see this, where we've seen this last few years, where those wage numbers have kind of, you know, increased a little bit in the road maintenance fund is when we do a large number of overlays. So, with the slurry seals, they're able to get a kind of a, the dollars go a lot further than when they just pay for asphalt. So, they're able to do a lot more programs, and so more of the engineering time that work on those slurry seal projects get coded to those salary numbers. So...
So, listen, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so you can see, we initially budgeted 38,000, spent 164,000. That 38,000 was probably based on, you know, kind of the baseline split, where maybe we identify they're gonna, this engineer will work 25% the road fund, 25% water, 25% sewer, but they end up spending most of the year working on slurry seals, and so more of their time gets allocated to those road projects.
That's super helpful. Thank you for drilling down into that for me.
So, professional services, tree removal, 10,000, a little bit of travel there, and that's it for the road maintenance fund. We wrote through that pretty quickly. Happy to answer any questions you might have on that, or we can move on to road construction. So, Fund 105 is our road construction fund. We have not of salaries and benefits charged to the road maintenance fund, $1,500 in travel and training, but we have 1.2 million identified in projects, which is made up of these programs over here. So, and this all corresponds back to the CFP, 50,000 identified for 32nd and M Avenue, 200,000 for South Commercial Avenue, 850,000 for R Avenue improvements, 125,000 in Safe Routes to School, and 10,000 for non-motorized improvements. These are the road projects identified for 2022. This next section down here are the sidewalk programs, 300,000 again, budgeted, split up between 88 improvements, 100,000 and 200,000 in sidewalk and trip hazard repair.
Mr. Hoagland?
Yes.
I had thought that in our discussion, the CFP, Public Works, that identified the Safe Routes to School item in the CFP as something they're not actually going to pursue. So, maybe if that lines up with that item there, maybe that needs to be harmonized.
It's an excellent point. Thank you. As a matter of fact, Mr. Buckland might have emailed me about that, about half an hour before this meeting started. Quite right. And that's it for our transportation programs. If there are further questions in Fund 105, we'd be happy to address those, or we can move on.
Any questions? Okay, move on, Mr. ...
So, that, okay, so that wraps up the, essentially, the tax-funded portion of public work. So, we'll move on to the utilities. The water fund is first utility fund that we'll take a look at, that starts at line 1006. And the first section of the budget is the capital projects. So, we have 6,75,000 identified in capital in the water fund to begin with, on the breaks out like this. We have 1.4 million identified in pipe replacement, 2 million in the Oak Harbor Pass Lake Waterline, 38,000 for cathodic protection, 11,200 for the shake alert, 40,000 for storage, a storage building. Water system plan update is 65,000, 100,000 towards decommissioning the retired water treatment plant. 350,000 for Phase Four and Five of the water treatment plant controls reliability program, telemetry upgrades of 62.5 fiber Phase 3A and deception pass, 500,000, water system security at 650, 300,000 for advanced metering infrastructure, 309,000 towards the Fidalgo Island Water Service Area, 150,000 for the water model, and 100,000 towards Whistle Lake Dam project. Moving down to the administration section of the water fund, salaries, benefits, interfund services. The interfund service change in the utilities won't be as dramatic as in the governmental funds. We did continue to fully fund the utilities in 2021, so we don't have the same makeup that we had, or the same amount to makeup that we had in governmental funds. 1.6 million identified towards paying taxes.
Mayor here.
Mr. Walters.
The, stepping back just a second to the Whistle Lake Dam project, is other improvements the right line for, what I understood we were going to be doing first on that, which is some professional services studying of that facility? Or do we have other money in professional services for that kind of work?
Yeah, and it's a fair question. So, I think, kind of my perspective, when looking at, when looking at these programs, these are projects that we've collected money from our, well, in this case, our retail customers on. But we've collected that money for those programs that we have identified, either in CFP or perhaps our, you know, internal CIP. But at the end of the year, when we do actually do a reconciliation of those, of these projects to determine or verify that they actually are capital, and those projects that are capital, we will capitalize those costs and transfer them onto our balance sheet, and then the ones that don't qualify as capital, we'll go ahead and expense off. So, it's possible, I think you make a good point, it's possible it might be a better fit in professional services, but from kind of an accounting standpoint, we will ensure that it's either expensed or capitalized properly at the end of the year. The taxes, 1.6, 1.69 million, that's public, PT, public utility tax, 5.029% of our gross goes to the state, what we collect on our utilities. Wages, benefits, $9,500 in supplies, that kind of rounds out this way through 7,500 through appliance rebate program, basic office and operating supplies, and website maintenance, the ACE website maintenance for our conservation program. Professional services at 215,000 includes water conservation outreach, recycling, more conservation outreach.
Steve, I can help out, this is Fred, I can help out with that 100 kilowatt project, if that's what you're searching for?
Yeah, thank you.
This was in the CFP, and should council want to do it, and this may be not the time to decide to do it or not, but an explanation is of why it was in a budget. This was a $200,000 project to put solar panels on top of the operations building. That has a payback of 12 years, which is reasonable, and it, that would provide, I can hear how many, what percent, a significant percent of the electricity for those, for that building complex there, there it is, almost 75% of the electricity for the operations complex would come from these, these solar panels. So, that's why it's in there. We can, you know, discuss it at the project level. We can, you know, discuss it at, at the project level. You know, later in the, later next year, it'll come to council as a contract and, you know, all that kind of stuff. So that might be the, a better time to, to talk about it. Anyway, that's an explanation of why that's there.
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. McDougall.
Just, just a really quick question on that seventy five percent, is the, is the bulk of the power consumed by that facility heating the facility? Or is there other aspects that are chewing up the bulk of that?
You know, that, that's a really good question, and I believe it is the heating. It's usually always the heating, heating or whatever, the HVAC systems. A side note, probably not, not a related answer, but we do share that building with the school district and, and, but they're a very minor, minor consumer of, of electricity there.
Got it. And our, our heating, well, because it's electric heating there, our electricity that we're purchasing from PSE, is that a hundred percent PSE green power at this point?
It is.
Okay, got it. So it wouldn't necessarily be a carbon savings, make, pursuing this project. It would be a, but it would have a return on investment after twelve years. It would basically be a profitable investment.
There you go. Exactly. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Moving on, the next line down is debt service, next two lines, three point three million in principal, one point four nine in interest. This next section, four oh one dot seven one two, that's the engineering section of the water fund, salaries, wages, a little bit of overtime, thirty five thousand in professional services, ArcGIS, cartograph, aerial mapping and paragraph orange advantage. So this next section in the cell here, you see, we notated dot ten, general W T Ps, general water treatment plant. So this is referring to this, if you want to follow along, it's, there is some sense to the way the bars numbers are constructed. So when you look at this bars number four oh one, seven thirty, five thirty four, ten, ten, this first ten, for example, down here, it's ten, twelve for overtime. This ten right here in the bars number signifies that it's general water treatment plant admin. So water treat, so it's million forty seven in salaries and wages at the treatment plant, five thousand budgeted for overtime and four hundred and seventy seven thousand for benefits, dot thirty one, operating, office and operating supplies, two hundred and three thousand. And this is just miscellaneous supplies. I took a look before the meeting, it's everything from, from coffee to hardware they use out in the plant. Five hundred dollars for fuel, four hundred, one thousand, supplies purchased for resale is the chemicals used in the processing of the water, made up of these elements here, alum, sodium and these other ones for a total of four hundred, one thousand. Interfunded sixty seven thousand, professional services at two hundred and twenty five thousand, which includes D O H permits, water quality assessment and the treatment plant optimization. Communication of nineteen thousand, when you see communication, you know there's going to be, cell phones are a big driver of that, other types of communication. But cell phones is the biggest one, thirty four thousand, travel and training. Insurance forty seven thousand, million thirty nine for utilities, which includes electricity, natural gas and solid waste. Repairs and maintenance, two hundred and eighty five thousand, which includes lagoon cleaning, pump maintenance and chemical feed line replacement. It takes us down to the dot twenty section of ours numbers. Over here again, this second to last set of ours numbers, the second, the, the second to last two digits, you know what I mean, the dot twenties there. So that refers to the, the water intake. So thirty eight thousand salaries, wages, a little bit of overtime, benefits, supplies at eight thousand, tools at a thousand, interfund at sixty seven thousand, professional services at twenty, which includes Q C C programming, utilities, forty two hundred, twenty thousand for dike mowing and building maintenance. Dot thirty is the distribution revenue, reservoirs, fifty four thousand for supplies, which includes fluoride, operating supplies, instrumentation, site materials, repairs, tank repairs and other sixty seven thousand for interfund services, forty one thousand professional services, which includes SCADA fluoride waste, engineering services, portable restrooms and pest control. Utilities of forty one thousand five hundred, repairs and maintenance of seventy eight thousand, which includes cathodic, the biggest item there, the roof at the Blue Heron Reservoir, paint cleaning, outside repairs and pump control repairs. Brings us down to dot thirteen, just water maintenance admin. Again, salaries, benefits, a little bit of supplies, interfund services of thirty thousand, professional services of eighty one hundred, uniform cleaning, C D L maintenance for the staff, locate supplies and locators. Communication and seventy five hundred, travel, training, insurance forty six thousand, utilities of four thousand. Brings us down to water transmission. Salaries, benefits, five thousand for supplies, eighteen thousand interfund, utilities at four thousand, thirty five thousand for O N M transmission mains. That brings down to water distribution, which is the dot sixty two section here. Salaries, benefits, twenty five hundred budgeted for overtime. Office and operating supplies of one hundred and twenty six thousand, which include sixty four thousand for backflow software, fifty thousand for O N M for mains and laterals, six thousand for safety gear. Fifteen thousand for tools. Interfunded one hundred and twenty thousand, four thousand for utilities. That brings us down to the next section of bars numbers, which is dot sixty three for in-city maintenance, twenty nine thousand wages, fifteen thousand benefits, hundred and twenty six thousand for supplies, which is primarily for meter replacements. Interfund services, eighteen thousand for professional services for meter calibration and repair. Leave this at the last section of the water department bars numbers for fire hydrant maintenance. Staff costs forty two thousand, twenty thousand in supplies, ten thousand for interfund services. That's it for the water utility. Happy to move on to sewer if council's ready. First section of the wastewater utility, other improvements, which is our capital program, twenty two point three million. The largest of this is nineteen point five for the new outfall. There's also one point five million for the sewer, sewer collection system. This is the I N I program. Twenty five thousand for septic handling facility upgrade, fifty thousand for bars, for bar screens and upgrades, two hundred and forty thousand for pumping upgrade, hundred and fifteen thousand for nutrient removal, four hundred thousand for basin rehab, five hundred for solids handling. Brings us down to the dot sixty four, which is equipment. Million seventy five, five hundred thousand for sanitary sewer collection system. Pump sixteen upgrade is what's scheduled, fifty thousand for pump station three upgrade and five hundred and twenty five thousand budgeted for a new, pardon me, new sewer back truck.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Is that a back truck, additional back truck or a replacement?
That was an additional back truck that we were hoping to have funding for, and I think we no longer have the funding route we were looking for on that.
Okay, so I'll, I'll wait and update then on that if we don't have the funding to pay for it. But my question was basically, if it was a replacement, why, why not have it in E R and R? But if it's new, then, then that question is answered.
It was going to be an additional.
Clap, Steve.
Okay. Yeah, so we can, we, maybe we can circle back on that. I've got an open question on that as well. Okay, so moving down into, into the utility, the seven eleven section is admin, salaries, benefits, interfund services, insurance, three hundred and sixty nine thousand. Debt service, so principal and interest, this is the wastewater share of the revenue bond that was issued in October of twenty twenty. And the capital raised from that is what was going towards the, the new outfall program. In engineering, a little bit of overtime, wages at two ninety seven, overtime of five thousand forty two for benefits and two hundred and forty four interfund services. The dot fourteen wastewater treatment plant admin, wages and benefits, forty two hundred for supplies, hundred and twenty six thousand in professional services, the biggest part of which is collection system capacity study of sixty thousand, industrial user rate and study of forty thousand. Also included Arc G I F, sorry, Arc Server G I S, Cartograph Laser Fish and, and Tarot. Communication seventeen thousand, seventy five hundred for training. Interfund services of fifty two hundred. Dot eighty is the ferry terminal pump station. Salaries, benefits and a little bit of overtime, seven thousand for supplies. Fuel of six hundred, utilities seventy five hundred. Repairs and maintenance of one thousand. Next section, the dot eighty one section is sewage pumping. Salaries, overtime, benefits, totaling one hundred and eleven thousand. Supplies of three hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and ten of which is for annual operations and maintenance, hundred and twenty thousand for sewer pump station upgrades, which corresponds to the CFP. Three thousand for generator fuel, interfund services, forty four thousand. Utilities seventy five thousand, requires in maintenance, a hundred and forty thousand, which includes annual O N M, bolt lid of seventy five thousand, pump and control upgrades, twenty thousand and thirty thousand for pump rebuilds. And the next section is for sewage treatment. Four hundred and seventy seven thousand wages, twenty three thousand in overtime, two hundred and thirteen thousand in benefits. Greater than twenty five thousand budgeted for supplies, which is made up of hundred and twenty thousand annual operating and maintenance, fifteen thousand portable sap, samplers, HVAC controller, day tanks, hundred thousand in equipment upgrades and seventy five thousand in equipment rehab. Twenty five hundred for tools, fifteen thousand for interfund services, thirty thousand for professional services. This is still sewage treatment main plant. Utilities, two hundred and fifty thousand, first maintenance is sixty thousand, twenty five thousand of which is equipment upgrades, fifteen thousand equipment rehab. Next section is for the lab. Salaries, benefits and overtime totaling three hundred and sixty one thousand, fifty six thousand for supplies, which is made up of thirty five thousand for tip below and M, twenty one thousand five hundred muffler furnace stereomicroscope. Professional services. Outside lab testing, permit testing for nutrients, eight hundred and fifty dollars for repairs and maintenance. And the next section of the budget is solids handling. Salaries, benefits and overtime, three hundred and twenty six thousand. Supplies at two hundred and eighty four thousand. Made up of annual O N M, twenty five thousand for density meter, decommissioned nuclear meter, twelve thousand, twenty one five for solenoid valves, H T modules of twenty six thousand, fifty thousand for scrubber caustic addition. Incinerator fuel at twenty two thousand. Professional services at eighty five thousand. Utilities at twenty two thousand, repairs and maintenance at two hundred and eighty thousand. The biggest piece of that, two hundred and twenty thousand for expansion joint repairs. Sewage collection. Seventy thousand, salaries and benefits, seven hundred and fifty for supplies, interfund at fifty two hundred. Professional services, six thousand, communication at eight thousand. Sorry. Check my notes just real quick. Okay. Salaries, benefits and overtime at three hundred and forty thousand, twenty five thousand for supplies, hundred and ninety three thousand, interfund services. And that's it for the sewer utility. So happy to go back. Any questions that council might have? Or we can move on to the storm sewer. First item here is eighty one thousand for interest and debt service. So what this is eighty one thousand, seven hundred and fifty two. Council may remember, two years ago, we, we used the, the storm fund emergency reserve and took a interfund loan from the water, from the water fund. Both of those were to be repaid over a three-year period. So the cost of both of those sums up to eighty one thousand for the year. Administration, fifty five thousand salaries, twenty six thousand benefits, professional services of forty thousand, vacation at a thousand. Salaries, overtime and benefits, three hundred and eighty six thousand, thousand professional services, thousand for travel and training. travel and training. 90,000 for salaries, benefits, and overtime 54,000 for interfund services. Salaries and wages 42,000. Professional services 11,000 for ArcGIS and Cartograph. Taxes of 117,000. 333,000 staff costs, interfunded 81,000, 1,000 for locates, 3,500 for training, 25,000 erosion control, and 250,000 for capital, 200,000 being system upgrades, and 50,000 related to the city hall parking lot. Both of these items tie to the CFP. And the thought is the 50,000 city parking lot, that's probably going to finish up this year. There may be some carryover, and that's what that item is for. That's it for Storm Drain. If there's any questions on the Storm Fund. Fund 450 is the sanitation fund, starts at line 1501. Salary and benefits at 308,000, we have 4,000 for supplies, 19,000 interfund services, professional services. I'm sorry, so this is in the administration, administrative, administration section of the bars numbers. 100,000 in professional services, the majority of that is budgeted for the A Avenue landfill issue. 4,000 communication, 2,000 for training, 27,000 for insurance. Little bit of overtime, salaries and benefits, 791,000, 2,000 for supplies. Another 8,000 for supplies, 900,000 for interfund, 38,000 for 38,000 for professional services for, primarily for tree, tree chipping. Taxes 689,000, utilities at 2.4 million. Majority of that contracted services with waste management, 1.4 million, 950,000 for tenage, 38,000 for sweeper debris, and $500 to pay for disposal of appliances. Also have $30,000 budgeted for new dumpsters. And that's it for the sanitation fund. Next fund. Our budget is 501, it's equipment rental fund. Salaries and benefits of 71,000. Administration section 3,000 for supplies, 1,000 for tools. 82,000 for interfund. Professional services of 30,500. Broken out by janitorial mats and supplies, fire extinguishers 2,000, pest control 1,500, and cartograph 10,000. Communication of 4,000, 1,000 for travel and training, utilities at 29,300. Repairs 5,000. Salaries benefits 16,000. Supplies at 3,000, equipment of 4,000, repairs 5,000. Another staff cost line 30, I'm sorry, 46,300 for supplies, professional services 2,500. Communication of 4,000, training of 2,000. The next. Next division, 392,000 is staff costs. 700 supplies, 400,000 for fuel. 6,000 for small tools and minor equipment, 7,500 professional services, 325,000 for repairs and maintenance. The new purchases, 1.4 million in equipment. 60,000 for facilities truck, our rescue truck at 300, police generator for 150, mower at 38,000, trailer. Water service truck at 150, boom mower at 180,000. 550,000 additional sewer back truck, no funding source. I think that's the same one we were talking about. And that's it in the ERNR fund. So council. Questions or further detail, be happy to try and address those. I know there was a lot there, went through a lot. So happy to, happy to try and answer any questions you might have though. I think, this is, I think, my third or fourth time going through it. It's a lot of big numbers, and there's a lot there, but it all seems to look pretty reasonable.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to comment again to Steve and indicate, you know, I really do appreciate the detail. Yes, it's a lot of numbers, but you know, it's part of our job to be good stewards of, of the resources that's coming to the city. There are probably a few individual line items I'll ask about a little later on after going back through it and getting, and will look for an explanation then from you, but it's not something that I'm prepared to discuss right now. So.
Makes sense, yeah.
And I think for me, when I look at this, the biggest driver in the increase in the budget is the outfall project. You know, everything else is pretty in line with what it's been. You know, of course, with labor and benefit costs are always additional, but as far as being good stewards of our service, you know, of our taxes and our resources, I think, the directors, and you have done a really good job, Steve. And funding ERNR so that we're paying for things as we go, we're not borrowing, we're, we're taking care of our future needs.
Mayor Gear, also, I did want to point out, we have this information on the city website. If you go to the finance department under budgets, this is all PDF'd and loaded on that website. So any council members or any members of the audience, any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I'd be happy to have those discussions.
Council, other comments tonight? This is our first big run-through. Do you want to have time to go back through like Mr. Young said and come back with questions? Okay. Looks like we've reached the end of our agenda this evening. This is, next week, we'll bring back all the other departments. And then we'll go from there. All right, at this time, I will adjourn the October 25th council meeting. Thank you all for attending tonight.